I'd like to call this meeting to a order. It's 7:01. I would like to, uh, the time is 7:01. Can we have a roll call, please, all the commissioners?
Anderson?
Here.
Grimes?
Here.
Hoag?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Carlos?
Here.
Ewing? Shepherd?
Here.
Bill?
Here. We have a quorum. I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce, we have three new commissioners. And just if we could maybe have you guys stand up and, uh, next to me right here is Dylan Shepherd. Been here for three years, he tells me. Good, thank you. And then Amy. Amy, you've been here a long time, or?
In the city, nine years.
Okay, thank you. And then let's see, we have Brandon. How long you been here, Brandon?
Twenty-something years.
Okay, good, good. So we've got a whole panel of witnesses and experts. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 12th? Is there any discussion or anything like that that anybody saw? Have you had a chance to read through it?
So moved. Grimes.
Okay, it was, uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Grimes.
Second it.
And Mr. Young for the approval. Uh, second it. So motion passes. Oh, yes. Um, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I have to stay. I wasn't here.
All right, thank you. And I approve too. Is there anybody in the audience, this is an audience time, which is part of our meeting, that basically, if you have something that's related to the, what we're doing tonight, you'll have your chance to do there, but if you just, just were here and you wanted to say something, you could. Or if it's something completely different that might be not on the agenda, this is your time. So this is your opportunity. Does anybody have anything they would want to do or say? Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay, I've been advised to wait.
Okay, okay.
It's about one of the agenda items.
All right, okay. Moving on to our first agenda item, we have a rea-, uh, a review of an existing CUP, which is a conditional use permit. What we have here is zoning calendar number 2776 for 701 Pine Street Banquet Hall had extended hours. Now, we approved that three months ago with a condition that in three months, we would take a look at that and see if the conditions were being met and if there was any problems. It was extended hours, I think, until 2:00 a.m. in the morning. So, uh, city?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Hi, everyone. My name is Sam Green. I am a planner here for the City of Waukegan. Welcome to the new commissioners. It's great to have a full slate of nine again. A couple of housekeeping items before we get into the agenda. We, the staff, will introduce the case. We'll make a brief presentation to give you the facts of what's going on, the background information, and then we'll invite the applicant to come up and speak about their case, and then anybody from the audience is willing, or who's willing is able to come up and give their comment about that agenda item before you vote. Also make sure when you're speaking into the microphones, you need to hold down the button so that it's always recording you for volume in the room, but also to make sure it's getting onto the recording and the record of the meeting. So as the chairman stated, this is a review of zoning calendar number 2776. This was three or four months ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the amendment to the application to extend their hours of business. They used to only be allowed to operate until 11:00. They were allowed to operate until 2:00 a.m. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted by a 4-1 majority to recommend approval. Community Development Committee voted with a 4-1 majority to recommend approval, and then the City Council unanimously approved the application to amend the license. One of the conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission had was, as the chairman said, come back after three months. We're gonna just get a review of how things have been going and decide, you know, was this a good idea? Do we need to add any new conditions on top of that? Are things all good? Just getting the lay of the land. So it's now been three months. And, uh, within that three months, that's the project for you again. So yeah, today we're here to decide, is the business operating in accordance with the terms of that ordinance that we approved? And are they operating in terms of these standards for conditional uses? I'll have those up at the end. Planning and Zoning Department reached out to every department that would have an issue if there was one. We reached out to police, fire, building and code, our licensing and zoning officer, and then our liquor licensing department. We've got responses from every department that they did not have any relevant calls. There was like a twisted ankle ambulance call, but that's not related to their extended hours. And none of them had any concerns or had something to say that the business having longer hours was like a community threat. One condition of the previous CUP that is of note is that they had to come in for parking lot permits. That hasn't happened yet, so, you know, we can work with the applicant to get an understanding of where that is, if they need any adjustments to anything, and just get a status check on that, but that's the only thing. So you have three possible paths forward today. You can do absolutely nothing if you think the business is operating fine with their new extended hours. You can recommend imposing additional conditions. If you think there's some element that needs to be changed about the business, you can recommend that the City Council impose that. Or if you think that this extended hours of business is a detriment to the community, you can make a motion to begin the revocation process to remove that license. Those are your three options, and these are those standards for conditional uses that I referenced earlier. These are what we make sure that these licensees are operating under. I am here, if you have any questions for the city, the applicant, and the operator of the businesses here as well, if you have any questions for them.
Would the applicant please come up? Were there any questions from the commissioners for the city at all?
I have one.
City?
Since the parking hasn't been determined and we have an additional request with the same situation, is it usual and typical to do the parking after the conditional use permit? Thank you.
Yeah, we usually give people about two years.
Okay, so that's not part of our deliberation, then?
No, I just wanted to note that that's still one of the things we're working on. Thank you for the question.
Could you, uh, applicant, could you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Delia De La Cruz. I'm the owner of the club La Bolera.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth? Do you swear to affirm the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Well, everything, um, everything is running smooth. It's going better than, you know, my clients are happy that, you know, they have at least a little bit of time, like the other ones. I, like I said, I have my permission to 2:00. I try to have everything and my, my parking lot and everything closed by 2:00. So normally I run till 12:00, 12:30, because my, um, my crowds are family, you know, where they take their food, their gifts, or, you know, like baptism, quinceañeras. So I want to make sure that they have enough time to take everything out, and at 2:00 it's over.
Well, I'd like to thank you because you, uh, the city gave you, uh, straight A's on your report card, so.
Yes, thank you.
So that looks good. My fellow commissioners, do we have any questions? Do we have a motion for any of our three options? Else that wants to support or say anything else about this? If not so, I'm requesting a motion from a commissioner to go forward to it.
I'll move to continue with the conditional use permit that was granted and not have any additional conditions other than those initially described.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to approve and just, uh, business can go on as normal from Commissioner Anderson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Hoag. Hoag. I'll get it right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, let's take a roll call on this.
Anderson?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Carlos?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes, motion approves.
Thank you.
Next, uh, point of business is old business. Zoning calendar number 2782, conditional use for the operation of banquet hall at 1428 Glen Flora Avenue. Staff, would you like to represent that?
Good evening, commissioners, and once again, welcome to the three new commissioners. This was something that was covered in the May 8th Planning and Zoning Commission, but since we have a sizable amount of new faces here, I am gonna take a second to go over the old slides as well. The applicant for this club is Armando Peña with Club Episao El Alto at 1428 West Glen Flora in Ward 6, and they are looking for a conditional use permit to operate as a banquet hall. The applicant has a previous conditional use permit to act as a community center, a learning center for teaching various classes. Right now, the zoning of the site is B2 community shopping, which allows conditional use of banquet halls. The surrounding area is both residential, um, yeah, single unit residential, general residential. And, yeah, the last business that occupied that space was an office store. Here's a map of the zoning. So the red X, it's hard to see, but it's north of Glen Flora. That is the property in question. These are some upgrades from the previous CUP. 2018 was before the CUP was signed and when the building was still operating as an office plus. Part of the previous CUP was landscaping and updated parking lot design. As you can see, the applicant complied and added curbs as well as some foliage and new paint. This is the interior that was provided to us by the applicant for the, the setup of the proposed banquet hall. Most of the operation is going to be in the front half of the building. If anyone is familiar with this building, it's quite large, but the back was mostly used for storage when it was retail. If, in this proposed banquet hall, the front portion, so what would have been the sales floor, would be the primary space for events. That goes over what I just said. And our options remain the same here. If it's denied, Club Episao El Alto can continue to operate as it has been under its existing conditional use permit, which again allows community classes, and it allows the building to act as a civic center effectively. And the options, if it is approved, the Club Episao El Alto will be allowed to operate as a banquet hall contingent that they apply with the conditions set forward. Yeah, when I initially made this, there was no public input, but last meeting, we did have, have some people come in to, to voice opposition to this based on the, the grounds that it was unfit to be next to residential neighborhoods. These were conditions from the old conditional use, and the more notable ones, obviously, we have things such as maintain a continuous Waukegan business license. So these are just ones of note, like no storage of unrelated business vehicles. Amplification of sound outside the property was a concern, so we have something in the conditions to cover that. Some more site landscaping conditions. specification that these conditions are meant to supplement the ones that were previously approved rather than to replace them. And the fact that we would need to see a parking plan, which I think if anyone remembers this previous case was the hottest topic. So now we've got old business out of the way. I put together a couple of slides outlining what has happened since then and any changes in the situation. I spoke with fire and building about propose, what upgrades would be required to the structure of the building? Should it be used as a banquet hall? Fire determined that the occupancy of that front space could be 275 people. There is not parking for that, as we know, but it is, it is good to know that capacity outstrips that. However, if the capacity as a banquet hall is over 50 people, if Armando is allowed to have more than 50 people in the banquet hall, it would need to have an extra door with panic hardware, per fire's recommendation. The plumbing requirements were a bit more complicated and a bit more extensive. As you can see, it's mostly broken down by how many toilets would be required per people, per sex, how many sinks would be required, as well as urinals per occupants. As it stands, 100 is kind of the breaking point where you would need more than one sink, toilet for each sex. Right now, that's all the facility has, is two toilets and two sinks total, as far as I know. The applicant has been looking to secure a parking agreement to fully use his space. The two properties that he's single, sing-, singled out with the, um, help of planning and zoning is a property to the northwest, that's the Waukegan Plaza Shopping Center, and to the southeast, which is the Misión Cristiana El Calvario. Each of them has their own unique benefits and drawbacks. The Misión Cristiana is a bit closer. It's about 800 linear feet away, measured from point of egress to point of egress. It would only provide an extra 27 parking spaces, so it would double the 27 that are already available on the site. Whereas the Waukegan Plaza, specifically Ross, the applicant and this business have been in contact trying to secure a parking agreement. And the parking available at just Ross in that building is about 215 parking spaces, so quite a deal. However, it's... I do believe I did not switch the distances, unfortunately. So Misión Cristiana El Calvario is 600 linear feet, 630 linear feet away, whereas the Ross is 800 linear feet away. Chris, Misión would be across the street, and we'd require extra conditions to ensure the safety of pedestrians and motorists. And Ross is on the same side of the street, so the only real requirement there would be maintaining the sidewalk between the two sites. Were an agreement to be made. Both would require a variance for maximum distances to off-site parking. The UDO places a 500-foot max on how far away external parking can be from the site of the business. Both of these are above 500. Going back to the parking issue, a couple of relevant things that I wanted to include, the previous CUP limited occupancy to 63 people. And according to the zone, previous zoning ordinance, and it, this is also a more square footage-based calculation, we would have gone for previously, similar businesses would have adhered to a three occupants per space rule, which would put the 20, make the 27 spaces allow for 81 total banquet hall occupants. Which brings us to the planning and zoning recommendations. Less than half of the requested 200, but I think, we think this is in line with the parking availability and the, the structure of the site. We're recommending that the, that the commission conditions the use of the banquet hall with a maximum occupancy between 63, the original CUP occupancy limit, and 81, the zoning ordinance limit, persons contingent on a three-month review. So similarly to what we did with the last case, we would open it up in three months to public comment, new evidence being brought to the commissioners, and they can choose to revoke, modify, or affirm. 63 to 81 wouldn't allow a very large crowd in a banquet hall, but it would facilitate smaller gather, gatherings such as business, um, business parties and baby showers and offer the applicant a potential source of revenue. As well as going back to the required upgrades. The building already meets the toilet and sink requirements. Were the occupancy to stay below 100, the only thing that would be required, to the best of my knowledge, is the inclusion of an extra door with the panic hardware. I should also mention that it is unknown if the kitchen is able or up to code to prepare food. So food served there would have to be catered in until the plumbing and building inspectors were able to give it the okay. And these are the findings of fact. They haven't changed since last time, so I'll open it up to the commissioners.
Sam, thank you. Uh, as far as the plumbing situation, so we're saying it's adequate at 100 occupancy, 100-person occupancy, it's adequate now?
There are two bathrooms, one male, one female. Each of them has one toilet and one sink, and that still falls within international plumbing code, as long as the occupancy doesn't breach 100 people.
Has the applicant had a time to see all this with the plumbing and everything?
Plumbing was something that we just learned recently. We have not had time to update the applicant.
Thank you, Sam. Can the applicant please stand and, and come up to the podium, please? Mr. Penna, right? Remember before you leave to sign up on there, could you basically, um, state your name after you get done with that?
My name is Armando Peña. I'm the president and the founder for the club, but cell alto is an nonprofit organization.
Could you raise your right hand, please?
I'm sorry.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to speak is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear it's true.
Thank you, sir. I know this is, the plumbing and everything is probably new to you and everything, so, so is the curve into it, but why don't you give us a recap of what you have done with the parking? Sam gave us that, and I'd like to hear it from you, and then basically what your concerns are about the plumbing and maybe reduced occupancy or something like that.
Well, so far for, for the parking, we're still working with the, with the owners, and they still give me time and time. But, uh, the new thing about the fire department went there, and they told me in some points they had to fix it. And it's good for me to know those in advance too, because I have, uh, already finished my order for the, for the ground and everything, but I, I have money for do the remodeling for the building. And, well, they're gonna come probably later on, on August or beginning of September. So, yeah, I'm gonna ask for extension and working out for all the details, and, and yeah, definitely, like, uh, I swear since 2013, when I founded my organization, when I be present with, and you and this new application, so I wanted to do everything by the law, to put everything together well, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna any confuses and I don't wanna, after, eh, this is not right, and this is not, even before I get into the, to the new place, they warned me, maybe you gotta, you, to have sprinkles and things, you know. And I said, okay, yeah, I, I gonna do no, no matter what, because I wanted to be in the safety for my building and for safety for the community and everything. And, yeah, and working with the neighbors and to do the best, and that's what I, right now, I'm, I'm, I cannot say more and just to pray to stay alive, because it's for hard for me, because I don't have the ground from the, you know, keep out the, the building, the buildings, you know, gas, electrician, but I, I know as a good Samaritan with me, as a congress girl, she's, she's trying to put me out for a new ground for the expenses and ministry expenses, because she see me, how I do and everything, and I don't know, you guys taught me to, and do the best as possible for my community and for all my heart, because I know my community house, they're strong, they always need things, and I'm Spanish. I'm the only, probably the one, only one I coordinate and I profit organization and around the area. Yes, thank you for her me.
Okay, Mr. Penna, we, we have several different options on which way we could vote, and I know this is a, the new plumbing thing might have a financial impact. You could request more time, or we could vote on it, or deny it, or what's the third, fourth one? We can set conditions of a zone, so we could approve with conditions. So, uh, I'll let you talk to the other commissioners. Commissioners, do you have any, uh, thoughts about this?
I do. Um, you know, I mentioned it last time when you were here about the parking, and I, I just don't, you know, I'm familiar with that building. I don't think anybody is gonna park at those two parking lots and walk to your building. You know, if I was going to your building, I'd just park on the residential streets, and who's gonna say anything, you know? So I don't think that's a viable option. Also, um, is there any accessibility report done on the building, ADA? Okay, because I, I don't think that building's accessible right now, and if you're inviting the public in, I think that's an issue. And then the last thing is, you know, you're limiting the occupancy to 63 to 80, I don't know what. How, who monitors that? I mean, let's say... How, who monitors that? I mean, let's say he has 200 there. You know, is somebody gonna go out there on a Saturday night and count the number of people? You're basically letting the person who wants to have more people in the building monitor himself. And, you know, that's not always been real successful, so I just.
No, it hasn't, and that's why we built in the three-month review, so residents would have a chance to say if there's any non-compliance. And I think we do have some vocal residents with this one.
You know, I said it last time, and I'll say it again, I think the parking is the issue for me. You know, you still haven't gotten an agreement with the people that you're presenting here, so that's, you know, a problem for me. And then secondarily, I don't think people are gonna park and walk that distance, you know, it's a long way to walk, especially on a Saturday night. So I think people will just park in the residential streets and ignore it.
I guess I have a question, because the conditional use permit application says 200 people, but you were talking about less than 200. So has the application changed, or?
Yes, in the supplemental document that I handed you, at the very end, there are some additions or modifications to the existing.
Okay, so now we're only talking about 81 people?
That would be for the commission to decide, but planning and zoning recommends between 63 and 81.
And so 27 spaces, if you're thinking three times, three people per car would.
That comes out to 81. That comes, that qualifies or it meets some previous zoning standards. As it stands right now, we don't have a parking minimum.
Right, right. Thank you for clarifying, because I.
Of course.
Somehow missed this, I did read it.
And to be clear, the revisions that you're suggesting under the conditions need to be done before we can actually even get 80 people in here.
So this would be a recommendation to the council, but yes, this would need to go through commission, sorry, not commission. Community development, then council, before anything happened. So I would have time to incorporate the commissioner's thoughts.
Any other commissioners that have a speak?
Mr. Penna, so are you accepting of the 81 number? I know that you had originally wanted 200. You would be fine with allowing 81?
Yeah, yeah.
That would, you wouldn't have to add a bathroom, so you'd be covered that way. And then before you were to have, if you were to exceed 100, which you wouldn't, then you technically wouldn't have to put that extra door in, only over 100, correct, staff? Only if there's more than 100 people?
More than 100 would necessitate more toilets and sinks, yes.
And the door with the escape handle?
The egress door is required with anything more than 50 people.
Okay, so that's something, are you willing to put that into place before hosting 81 people?
Oh, yes, sorry.
And then the other condition that's listed here is regarding food preparation. Are you willing to limit your food to catered food until you can have your kitchen approved for food preparation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I guess really the question becomes, and I'll ask Mr. Haug, because he raised an issue that I think we all have a concern with, is parking, and there is no parking ordinance, so to speak, right now. So are you, Mr. Haug, with 81 people in that 27 lot, spice lot, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I still think it's too many people, really. You know, I still have concern about accessibility too, because I don't think those toilet rooms are accessible either, and if you're gonna bring the public in, I think they need to be accessible.
I agree with that, and I do also have a concern about the parking, but I did want to hear what you had to say. I'm not sure that the parking can be accommodated in any way that Mr. Penna would like to have it accommodated here with what is before us. I don't think that 27 spaces is enough. I do think that already the neighbors have issues with the parking, and I don't think at this point, we, you've had events that have 100 people or 81 people in there, and if you have, it's been an issue for neighbors. So I do feel that that is the main issue, and I agree that the ADA issue needs to be addressed as well. Before I would be comfortable recommending this to city council. Did you have any thoughts on that, Mr. Penna? I don't, if you have anything to say, I'm absolutely willing to listen, of course. About those two things.
I didn't catch it very well, and so then, because, you know, I didn't, I invited somebody to help me, a translator, but they couldn't make it.
So our two big concerns so far that we've listed are parking, the lack of parking, and accessibility for disabled people. The bathrooms and accessibility to the building. So those are the two concerns that right now have been voiced. Does that help a little bit? I mean, those are things that.
Are your bathrooms handicapped accessible? Do they have grabbers? They're not?
No, no. Try to work it out with the granters coming, so to fix some things.
Can you say that loud so they can hear you?
Yeah, but like I said, with the granters coming, is where I, all those things to do the remodelation and fixing things. Yeah, I had to do, you know, the way it has to be, you know, even like I said, the fire department went there and he asked me to have a new door, double door, on the corner on the west side of the building. And, and yeah, it's, it's what I looking for to, like I said, to put everything the way it has to be and don't make it, you know, something wrong and everything good for the community or for the peoples, gonna use my place.
I have a question for staff. So depending on what we decide here, if, if we were to go another three months, say, let's say, and this gentleman invests money regarding parking or whatever, and ultimately we say no, because it doesn't pass muster, so to speak, I mean, if we put it out another three months, what would Mr. Penna's need to do? I would think that if he's gonna try to do anything, he should talk to you first to say, this is what I'm thinking of doing, because to have him make an investment before it comes back before us again, because I'm feeling that this is, we're not ready to.
So any of the fire and plumbing upgrades would, were conditioned in the addendum to have to happen before the location is used as a banquet hall. Those would only be implemented were this to be brought to council.
So unless we tonight approve to move it forward to council with these additional conditions, we don't, we have to decide what we want to ask of Mr. Penna and the timeframe and all that, if we are gonna do that, is this is correct?
Sorry.
If we did, if we were not, if we did not feel comfortable approving this to go to city council, there's only one other option in our motions here, and one is to extend the timeframe again. So that would be one option, if we're not ready to say we're ready to move forward. The other option is to approve it to go to city council, but there's no ADA mention in here, and I don't think any of us are really comfortable with parking at this point.
If you wanted to continue it, you could ask him to get to the point of having approved permits for those required renovations. Then you would know that the city inspectors had approved everything, that what he was proposing met the city standards and it was ready to go. Then he would have only made an initial investment. Anybody know off the top of your head what the initial, is it $25 for the permits?
For the permit?
There's an upfront permit fee, but the main permit fee is at the back end when you receive the permit. So there would be a small investment in the fee, and then whatever it cost him to have those designs and permit applications prepared. But he wouldn't have then had to do the work already or pay for the full permit fee. If you wanted to go that route, that would be an option. So you would know that those were approved.
And given Mr. Peña's mention that he would have been more comfortable had there been an interpreter here, I also tend to agree with the continuance to make sure that he gets all of his questions answered and understand exactly what's being asked, because what it sounds like, Mr. Peña, is you have a grant which helped you with the purchase and the upkeep of the building, and your ability to move forward would be contingent and dependent upon those grant funds, correct?
Yes.
And there's also a timeline related to when you need to have some of the work done in order to be able to receive those funds, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
A question here for city staff, I guess. I really appreciate all the extra information that we've received this time.
Thank you.
Question before I make a couple extra comments here on the, the safety doors?
Yes.
You mentioned one threshold. Are there additional thresholds if it goes up to 200, or is that zero to 50 with two doors cover us till whatever?
The only threshold that Chief Zupac had mentioned was the 50 threshold, so.
Thanks. So what we, if I sum it up the way I'm hearing things tonight, what we have is, and we didn't like what happened last time, so we really, we're reducing the ask, right? We're coming down to 81, because that's gonna fit the parking. We've got one door that we need. We do the ADA piece, and if we're okay with 81, then, then maybe we can vote on that and, and, and move it along. So the way I see it, we got two things to think about. One is, do, you know, do we approve the changes and as they've been presented to the 81 with the additional conditions that we just discussed here? I think the second question is, and I really appreciate the comment about the interpreter, the second question is, is Mr. Peña comfortable with the 81 being the cap? Because if 27 parking spaces gets into the 81, I'm with these other guys. I don't know that there's a parking solution here that makes a lot of sense for a lot more attendees, and, and so I don't know. So my other question back to Mr. Peña to consider is, is 81 going to be an okay number? Because if it's not, and we're gonna be pushing back here for 200, we need a parking solution that makes some sense. Otherwise, I just don't see it going forward.
I know the option on the parking, because my neighbor who leads to me the parking lot, I mentioned about, you know, whether parking for the north side, the north side, he told me he, I'm okay to use it. But with, with the, already with the agreement with the parking, because it's only whenever it's, I had to use it when there's rent for that kind of, you know, stuff. Even he told me he wanna use for where you do, you volunteers to put the cars over there, or all the stuff. They, they help me to do there, they can parking over there. He has like 10 spots there, only the north side and the north side. You want me to get there again, because you point me those two places, that's what I working on and the chairs and that. I know Mr. Larson is allowed to help me to do, using those 10 spots that he got. I don't know, helps too, for this too.
I just think it's really important, Glen Flora is such an artery to the hospital, that it's very important that Glen Flora should not get parking, you know, or overflow. I think parking is a critical issue here. Probably not for the 81 people, but if it, if it goes more than that, it's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, but we don't, well, since we start the food pantry, we start, we don't do any parking outside in the street, and we don't allow to do that kind of way to, I know, and even like I said, you're welcome to go and check it out, how we do every Sundays and Fridays when we give away the pantry and the bread. But I don't, we, especially, I know the school, you saw the school at the corner, they got very weird, big, big lines, and never complain about those kind of lines they make, and it's in my, in the same size as my building. And they always have for in the morning and afternoon. And as, and as I don't to allow to pull cars outside or make a big line, because it's not the way I asked to be my place to run. That's why I did by appointment only certain cars coming in and out, and that's it. But I'm not to make it the long lines like the school do it. But you, that's what I, I beg you guys to be concerned, because definitely need some ways to raise money, but I, yeah.
Commissioners, any other questions?
So I do have a question, because my concern also is the parking and the design of your parking lot. And like you said, come by, see how you run it. I drive by that building quite often, and that drive to go back to that back parking lot is always blocked by other cars and vehicles. So even those parking spots in back outside the forum front are not accessible most of the time. So parking is the largest concern, and having someone walk down the street and across Glen Flora, which is a major road, worries me about the safety of those patrons.
And this way is, nobody is going to make a land, it has to be parked to get into the, not in the street.
Any questions from the audience? Anybody with question? Go ahead, ma'am. Come on up, we'll swear you in. Would you please state your name?
My name is Joan Welton.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to affirm the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I represent the property, which is 1504 West Glen Flora, which is directly west of 1428 West Glen Flora. My concerns on this is for safety and security, not only for clients, but staff and neighbors. We've already covered the capacity, but right now, I think we all agree that the parking for the 30 cars approximately is not enough for that many guests. He's proposed parking now. If he goes to the plaza, that is approximately four blocks to the west. And you, the persons would have to cross one side street, go by a number of residences. The church where it's proposed is approximately two blocks to the east on the opposite side of Glen Flora. Now Glen Flora is a busy street with a lot of ambulance traffic as well. If the persons decided that's too far to park, decided to park on the side streets, they would still need to cross Glen Flora. And the nearest traffic signal crosswalk is one block to the east, which is Butrick Street. And the other, if you go west, it's all the way down to Lewis Avenue. And that would be a danger to the persons crossing, especially if they have children, and I think we all know that children sometimes, you know, wanna run ahead, get away from their parents or whatnot. And this would definitely increase foot traffic in the neighborhood and danger to the clients. It was mentioned about another emergency exit. Currently, the other exits to the building are in the back of the building by the loading docks, which the, it, previous business was a warehousing area. Mr. Penna mentioned the proposed exit would be the west side of the building. Well, that building is built right up to the property line, and there is no way for them to put a sidewalk or exit path or anything there. So it would have, if there was an exit on the west side, it would need to be on the front of the building, you know, towards the west. Depending on the number of people, I'm concerned about who's going to police the number of persons that are there at one time. You know, is somebody gonna go in there and do a head count or whatever? And if it is overcrowded, it would make it difficult for the police, fire, EMTs, whoever's necessary, to get in there, because the current entrance is a single-door entrance. And if they have to get in there and get access, or if the people need to. and get access, or if the people need to evacuate, right now it's tough, so that the proposed second exit is necessary. We mentioned the bathrooms. One of my other concerns was not only in the kitchen area, but out on the floor of the banquet hall, if you were to put in a bar, coffee bar, or whatever. There's not any running water there, no sink for the servers to sanitize their hands as necessary, sanitize the tabletops, you know, so that it's sanitary for the clients. I'm not sure what the requirements are, but I'm wondering, I know if they're cooking food, they need to have a certified food handler. If they're just reserving catered food, I'm not sure on that if they need to, but it needs to be inspected by the health department. I do not see any proposed smoking areas, and that's a concern of mine, as to how far that, you know, are the people going to be out on the sidewalk smoking, throwing their butts into the street? You know, what's their proposal for that? Let's see. And the, the club has now said that they are aware of the building codes, what it, what is requested of them and that. I think that's it. So that's my concerns. I know some of the other neighbors are concerned about parking, excess foot traffic, but they were unable to come today. Mr. Smith did make a presentation at the last meeting, but that's my main concerns.
Did you say you lived at 1504?
Yeah. I do not. I am the executor of that house.
Oh, okay.
It, it was my long-term partner's house. He passed away approximately three years ago, and I am the executor of the house, so I'm dealing with that.
Sam, we did get an objection that was written by Mr. Raymond Goodbody that lives at 1504 West.
Yeah, well, it was, when I wrote the one on the previous one, I wrote it, the, the letters came in Raymond's name, but I wrote the response at the last meeting.
So you, you basically wrote this one too, then, right? This, the one we have in the package?
I didn't write anything for this one, other than I would be... That was from the last one, I believe.
The letter we have is from the last one.
The taxpayer records that we had on file were for Raymond Goodbody.
Okay.
Miss, Miss Welton's name is on there.
Miss Welton's name is on that.
Oh, okay.
So I just want the, the notes to indicate that we did get a, a letter, you know...
Well, that was pre, the previous meeting, three months ago.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Commissioners, did you have any questions at all?
I have a comment, more than a question. I think because this is where it's located, it's, it is a residential area, and it's not, there isn't available parking in the, within the lot lines. I do think that there are ways to solve this. I think it needs some creativity. And I keep hearing, and, and I, I live in the neighborhood, I'm worried about parking. I am worried about impact for neighbors, I, but I also think it's possible to do this. And I think it's even possible, if the facility is upgraded, to manage this, but not without some creativity and some thought. And I would want some creative solutions before I would approve this. But it is possible. Theaters do it all the time. In Chicago, there are places that do this and are able to run successful businesses without a parking space on their property. And I, I just think we have to be creative, and I'm hoping the city can help with this. I have some ideas. And, and I think that the club is doing great work. I don't want to see them not do this work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Do we have a motion on the floor, then? Is there any other questions, or should we go to a vote?
There's no motion yet. I'll make a motion.
Would anybody want to present a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. And I'm sorry, Teddy, that this is my motion, but I don't believe that there is a solution here, whatever creativity we've been talking about, parking at this location since the food pantry was set up, and it's the same, the same problems. And Mr. Pena, to ask you to make investments in your door, your, all the things that you would have to make investments in, and to come back to this committee, and parking still be an issue, which I think has been the issue all along, I, I just don't think it's fair to ask you to do that, to spend all that money, and then come back and still have parking be an issue. So at this moment, I'm going to make a motion to recommend to City Council denial of the conditional use permit for zoning calendar number 2782 due to those factors.
So I have a, a motion from Commissioner Haynes. And do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Haig, okay. Any further discussion?
I know there's a motion on the table, but I would have supported a motion to extend. I still don't feel comfortable with the fact that Mr. Pena may have questions, and we don't have an interpreter present.
Duly noted. We'll have to, we do have a motion on the floor, so we'll have to look at that first. Mr. Penna, would you think maybe an extension for a little bit more time would be the proper thing for you, for your concerns and your business and everything else?
And we would want you to, for sure, have an interpreter the next time we convene, because, Commissioner Ewing, I'm sorry, I just met him tonight. Commissioner Ewing has a very valid point about the fact that you don't have an interpreter here. And so I would, would have really liked to withdraw on my motion, but I don't think I technically can, so... Okay. So I, I just do think if you, if you are willing to have an extension to try to work out some of these issues, and you can meet with Teddy. Teddy has great ideas for you, Commissioner Anderson. You know, but definitely to have an interpreter next time, so that we can decide what to do here.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Could we restate the motion?
Yeah, well, my team is, yeah, it's gonna take a little more longer than I expect, because I said the grant is coming, but they mentioned it's gonna be later on in August, so beginning of September. But after that, when I do the, you know, the contract with the, whatever, to building everything, yeah, it's gonna take a while.
Is there a month?
Five, six months.
What timeframe do you want? What timeframe of an extension would you want? What date? September, did you say? October? August?
October, probably.
October?
October, yeah. Yeah, like I said, because that I, that I had to do remodeling and everything, to put everything together. And like I said, the grant is coming, probably around the, you know, the last, with August or beginning of September. But when I get the money, so I had to make all the paperwork to send who's the contract, and they qualify with this, with the city, and with the state, and then all those kind of requirements, is, yes, like a nightmare to put those things. But yeah, it's taking a while, because the last time that I did, all the remodelations for the building takes almost like eight months, with the sprinkles, with the plumber, with the electrician, with the, I started to, to get into the place. Yeah, it takes, takes...
Commissioner Haynes, would you like to revise your motion?
Am I, am I allowed to do that at this point? So, how do I say?
I certainly don't have a problem with that. I'll second it again and make the modification. It's just, I want to reemphasize is, I, we said it last time, and we're going to say it again, solve the parking problem. You know, don't come back again without solving the prop, parking problem, because we're spending a lot of time here, and we're not getting anywhere. It's got, you gotta solve the parking problem. The modification, I'll be more than happy to second it.
Okay. So I guess my modification is to... Okay. I'm going to withdraw my previous motion, and I'm going to make a second motion here, that we continue zoning calendar 2782 to the commission meeting in October at the request of the applicant, so he can provide additional information regarding number one parking. And Mr. Pena, please don't spend tons of money changing your building until you know you have a parking situation that works. Don't waste your money. We don't want to have you spend all that money and then have us say no, because the parking is not resolved. Parking is number one. Number one, parking. Okay?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hough?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Carlos?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Shepherd? Bill?
Yes. Motion carries. Got your work set out in front of you, and I, I hope you could feel that we do have good intentions. We know that you have good intentions, too. Your food distribution, everything like that is very admirable, and I, we do appreciate that, so...
I just would add one thing, staff, for next, when he does come back, could we have an interpreter to assist, so that we could have some clarification?
Of course. And did you ever specify what month the continuance was?
October.
October. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Along, our next business is, oh... We're a new business of a zoning calendar 2786. That's a variance for a lot line setback requirements for accessory structures. Staff?
Hello again, commissioners. By the end of the night, you'll be quite tired of me. This one is a bit more simple. Zoning calendar 2786 is for shed setbacks. The applicant and owner of the project is Yolanda Lara, who lives at 705 Chest Street in Ward 6. Currently, the accessory structure setbacks are five feet from the lot line per the Unified Development Ordinance. As it stands, the shed is one foot, or less than one foot away on one side and three feet away on another. As such, that constitutes a more than 50% variance, so this body will be recommending approval or denial by City Council. And I apologize, that is a correction to the motions that were provided to you. This is the location of the structure in question. As you can see, it's very firmly residential. An aerial view with the lavender square denoting where the existing shed is, an outline of the setback requirements. If the variance is denied, the shed can exist exactly as it is currently, or it has to be removed and rebuilt with the proper setbacks. Whereas if the commission decides to approve the variance, the shed can, one, exist where it is now, but two, undergo extensive repairs and rebuilding. We have received no written or spoken objection to this project, and here again are your findings of fact.
Any questions, commissioners? If not, could, who's, who's applying for this?
Hello.
Just before you leave, make sure you sign that, but you could do that later. You want to state your name?
Yes. My name is Jasmine Zamora. Yolanda's my aunt. She is working, so she cannot be here today.
Okay. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you, do you swear to affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So the shed was already there. It's a really old house, so it's been there for a long time. They did have some repairs that needed to be done. Just over time, the wood was wearing down, so we wanted to replace the wood panels, but we were not aware that we needed permits to do that. We did get a permit, but that was after we had already started the construction.
The applicant applied for a permit, and that's how this variance came to the city's attention.
But we just want to repair what was already there, but just replace the panels.
Commissioners, any questions?
So you're just re-cladding your building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, we didn't know that there was those lines, but it was already there, so it, it's just, just want to replace it.
Do we have any questions from the audience?
This, this may be an extra clarification, but it's, so the shed's not changing size, not changing location, just...
No, it's, the foundation's the same. We're just changing simply the panels and stuff.
Awesome. Thank you.
It's more or less a repair, then, right?
Yeah.
Okay, make it look nice and...
Yep. Yes.
So do we have a motion? We have two, two, two motions that we can consider? So I'm looking for a motion.
I motion to approve.
Shepherd made a motion to approve. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Carlos, a second, Sam. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hough?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Carlos?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Get your building permits and fix it up and...
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Going on to zoning calendar 2787, it's a conditional use to operate a motor vehicle repair shop at 840 Grand Avenue, with a variance to operate a motor vehicle repair shop on a lot smaller than 15,000 square feet. City, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Welcome to the new commission as well. It's a pleasure to see the full day is here. My name is Tyler Williams. I'm one of the planners here, and I will be presenting zoning calendar 2787, which is a proposal to add a motor vehicle shop, and as the chairman said, a variance to operate on a lot smaller than 15,000 square feet, the lot... The lot is about 12,342 square feet. Our code says any motor vehicle repair shop has to have a minimum of 15,000, so that is why they need the variance. The applicant is Thayer Nae Malik. The owner is Derry Ramsey. It's in the 4th Ward. The zoning is B2, community shopping, and there's R3 to the north, R4 to the east, which are both residential zones, and across the street on both sides is B2, similar to the size of lot. The original building was built in 1960 and as far as I can tell, this lot has always been used for motor vehicle type of business. It used to have a repair shop and before that, there was a gas station there. So here's a bit of a location for you guys, the zoning map. As you can see, it's on the corner of Grand and Jackson on the northeast corner. And here's the street view of this place, as some of you may be familiar with it, driving past it on Grand or Jackson. A few things I want to point out, is you can see that it's pretty much a sea of asphalt right now. There's no landscaping and the depressed curb, so right now, we have a requirement, the maximum curb is allowed to be 36 feet. So the owner has agreed to lower that curb and add in some landscaping to fit the requirements of our code. So a quick overview, as stated before, it's a motor vehicle repair shop located at 840 Grand. The owner has already committed to various improvements such as the landscaping and sprucing up the building. The work that will be done at the shop will include oil changes, diagnostics, brake repairs, tire services such as installation, repair, and balancing. There's two bay doors, each with a car lift. There will be no bodywork or painting, so there won't be needed to add any paint boosts or anything. It's a commercial area and we, I don't know if the new commissioners know, but with every project, we're required to send out notification to every resident or property owner within 250 feet. We did not receive any feedback from the public, whether in support or against. A few of the key conditions, a lot of these are standard with a lot of the other motor vehicle repair shops, so all work must be, take place within the confines of the building. No work to be done in the parking lot. We realize that it's a small lot, so we want to make sure the outdoor storage area, or that's leftover, sorry, but the outdoor parking lot must be hard surface and then there will be, have to be striped parking spaces as well. We know sometimes a lot of the car places sometimes have an overflow of parking, so we want to make sure that there isn't an overflow of vehicles throughout the lot. And here are some of the proposed improvements. So you can see there's going to be added landscaping as well as a bunch of trees and shrubbery sort of to improve the curb appeal. The current sign is too close to the lot line, so they have agreed to move the sign five feet away from the lot line. And they also are going to add a refuse, which is their garbage, a fence around the refuse to add screening. And here are the findings of fact for the variance and then the finding of facts for the conditional use. Both of these are going together since you can't approve the variance without approving the conditional use since the lot size cannot change, so that's why it's one proposal. And so if you deny it, the building will remain vacant until a more suitable use is identified. If approved, a new motor vehicle repair shop will be allowed to operate at this location. At this time, I will take questions from any of the commissioners.
Thank God. That has been such a delinquent lot for I don't know how long, so I don't know who's doing it, but man, thank you.
Yeah, the owner actually owns a few properties around town. He's done some improvements on as well. So yeah, it's good to see this, you know, property being approved for sure.
The landscape plan is a huge improvement.
Yes, we agree. And as you can see, yeah, the curb, so right now, there is actually no curb. You can just drive on across the sidewalk entirely. They're going to add curbs and lower that existing driveway to 36 feet on both Grand and Jackson. All right, thank you for your time.
Yes. Anybody from the audience have any questions for the city? Okay, is the applicant here? Sir, could you come up and make sure that you, before you leave, sign that? But if you could state your name and raise your right hand, yeah. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear for the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, he did a very good job. He said everything in details, you know. I'm sure everyone knows the spot has been, I would say, in the past at least 25 years, running as an automotive tire shop and car services. So we're going to do the same thing, okay? However, I understand that, I was told the zoning was changed and that's why we're here for variance. So we are going to update, we have architecture work and everything ready for the new code that the city of Waukegan is asking us to do, which is mainly the parked lot, the landscape, and things of that nature. And most important, that the owner of the land do own Cross Street. I don't know if that's important for you guys to know, but the Cross Street directly, the gas station across the street directly, he owns that as well. And another one on Green Bay too, so.
You're agreeable with all the conditions then that were stated, yes? Commissioners, any questions?
I do have a question. Right now, that shop does have four rent signs on it.
Has a what, I'm sorry?
Has four rent signs on the front of that building right now. So you would be taking those down once improvements are done and running the business yourself?
Yes, yes. It's going to be almost like a new, I mean, with the landscape and the parking lot, it's all going to be new. So it's going to be a totally new building in a way.
No, I looked at the plans and they all look absolutely gorgeous, especially compared to what's there right now.
Thank you.
Commissioner, go ahead. No question, okay, yeah, okay. Any questions or anything to say from the audience? If not so, I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, I'll take care of that. I'd like to make a motion to accept the findings of fact, recommend of the city council approval of the conditional use permit and variance for zoning calendar 2787 with the conditions identified in the staff report.
No second.
So we have Commissioner Young and Commissioner Hewing, seconding that. Any questions? Discussion? Not so, let's get a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hogue?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Carlos?
Yes.
Hewing?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. Good luck. Motion passed. Time he has to go to the city council, because we can't approve this, right?
Correct. So this will go to Community Development Committee the first Monday in August and Tyler will communicate with you about the time of that meeting.
Okay, so we can't start work yet, obviously.
You can apply for permits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Moving on to our last piece of business here, we have a... We have zoning calendar number 2788, which is an appeal from the 25-DRB-05 decision. That basically is a subcommittee that basically looks at the things and at that time, the motion was denied for this sign. And our position is to look at that and decide whether we agree with them or we disagree with them. City?
I promise, this is the last time you're going to see me tonight. So as the chairman said, this is PZ 2788 and it is a, not a holdover, but a continuance from a development review board decision regarding an electronic message sign on 1,000 Washington Street in Ward 4. The development review board denied it in a split vote. The applicant appealed that decision and it was brought to this body because of that. Just to be clear, based on the Unified Development Ordinance and city ordinance in general, the purpose of this body is to determine whether the development review board acted an error. So maybe a little bit different than what you'd normally be used to if this were just a standard variance. Here is the zoning map. As you can see, everything to the east and west is B2 zoning. Across the street is the school, even though it's residential zoning, and behind the property is also R3 residential. Here is a clearer look at the property. The shaded green area is 1,000 Washington Street itself. This is the space where the business requesting the sign operates out of. However, the owner of 1,000 Washington Street also owns the two shaded yellow parcels. And I included where the sign was. It's the little red dot right on the lot line at Washington Street. As it stands, this is the sign right now. It is in a deteriorated condition. The picture on the left is looking to the west, whereas the picture on the right is looking to the east. And a synopsis of the DRB qualifications. Electronic message signs are regulated by a couple different regulations. Three of them, four of them, I mean, are, they require 250 feet of street frontage, 2.5 acres total lot area, and 15 feet from any property line, as well as the EMC components can make up more than 50% of the total sign. Of those four, the DRB decision was requesting relief from three of them. As it stands, the property itself has 144 feet of frontage on Washington Street and 85 feet of frontage on North Victory Street, or 229 total feet of frontage, falling 21 feet short of the street frontage requirement. In total, the three parcels make up .37 acres of area. And the lot, the sign itself is going to replace the current sign, which is right on the lot line, which requires a variance from the 15 feet from, sorry, required past tense, a variance for 15 feet from any property line down to zero. The sign is only 50% EMC components relative to the whole sign and so the plan was compliant on that and no variance was requested. The DRB decision was decided on April 24, 2025 with six members present, three voting in favor and three voting against. Three in favor were building, engineering, and fire. And the three voting against were community development block grant and planning and zoning and police. I wasn't able to get in touch with police regarding their decision, but community development voiced concerns about light pollution next to a residential area and planning and zoning voiced concerns about a possible safety hazard that the sign could pose being across from an elementary school or a middle school. High school, thank you, high school. We have received three letters of support from the applicant for this project. And once again, the planning and zoning commission's purpose here is to either affirm, deny, or sorry, reverse, modify, or affirm the decision of the development review board. A reversal would allow the EMC project to proceed to the permitting process. As it stands, they have not entered the permitting process yet, but a reversal of the DRB decision would functionally allow that. Modification of the DRB decision would be allowing the sign to proceed to the permit process once it follows all stipulations that the commission sets forward. And affirmation of the EMC project or of the DRB decision would mean that the EMC project is still denied. And once again, these are the findings of fact that the DRB was working off of when they made their decision. They're the same findings of fact as all of you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for city?
Yes, I do. First of all, I'm just curious what the safety hazard is of the sign for being across from a high school. What is the concern?
The concern was distracting drivers, that the message being displayed on the sign would take people's attention away from the road and potentially away from passerby.
Okay. And then, this comes from a place of no knowledge on this subject, so I'm asking. I know that when different businesses like gas stations, et cetera, put lights up, there's certain lumens or wattage or whatever it is that the measurement is in terms of how bright the light is and there are ways that those businesses can have their lights at a certain level during the day and are required to reduce them in the evening. Is that a criteria that is available for signage as well?
That is correct. The lumens or the foot candles can be reduced as well as the message can be made static. And at non-peak times or after hours, the sign can be turned off altogether.
So that is, if that was, if this was something we wanted to consider, we could add that as a condition?
Yes.
And then the numbers that you've provided us here, actually, that's not my question, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I should reiterate, there is no conditioning here as you're just choosing to modify, sorry, modify, reverse, or affirm the project. We could handle those aspects of the project during the permitting process, though.
Okay, so since it was a split decision, was, since it was three to three, how was it disapproved? If it was three-three, how, is that just because there was no decision really, that's why it came to us?
By code, if it's a split vote, it's an automatic denial.
Okay, and so you're saying that the light restrictions or whatever that I was mentioning could be addressed during the permitting process, but how do we ensure that that's done? If we can't include that as a condition in whatever we're saying here, how do we know that that will be addressed? What's some avenue or mechanism for that?
Yeah, the code already requires that automatic dimming a part of the brightness of the every electronic message.
Okay.
Every sign has to go through the same lighting process.
Okay, okay. And then, one other thing here. I'll think of it. Let's move on.
I've got a question, and this may not be the best place for this question, but I'll ask it right now anyway. Am I reading this right? Are the three letters in support of this proposal all written by the applicant?
That is correct.
Using three different addresses that they own?
That is correct. There may have been some miscommunication there. They did receive three notification letters that the planning and zoning department is required to send out, each of which included a optional letter of support or objection.
I just assumed that they would support it, so, but I appreciate the notes. Thank you.
Never hurts to be safe.
I have a question. The sign that you're referring to, is it a, an image sign or is it going to be like a scrolling sign where the back is black with just letters? Or like how elaborate are the images that we're expecting?
Perhaps this is a good question for the applicant to answer, if I can. Call the applicant up to the stand.
And before the applicant comes, I just have one question for staff. This is in front of Waukegan High School, where Waukegan High School also has its own electronic sign, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Okay.
Further question?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot size and a lot street frontage, so they meet that, whereas this lot doesn't meet that, and they applied for the variance. This is deciding whether, you know, saying no to that variance was the wrong decision.
So it's really not a safety concern, right? Because they've got one right across the street doing exactly the same thing.
Well, we're asking you to decide whether that was, you know, the right or the wrong decision.
Yeah, and I guess my question is, I am just having a hard time wrapping my arm around what we're giving them a variance on or approving or disapproving. You say it's not in the right position, so that's one thing. Is the size another thing? And then, that it's an electronic message board, is that the third thing?
The Development Review Board decision covered four aspects of the sign.
Right. One is the location, and then the street frontage, is that related to the size of the sign, or the fact that they can even have an electronic messaging sign?
It was a pre-qualifier for having an electronic sign.
But they could have just a regular static sign?
Yes.
Okay, so the electronic message sign is related to the frontage, so that's why the Waukegan High School can have it, and they can't?
Yeah, Waukegan High School has a lot more street frontage, they have a lot more lot area.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any sense of what this sign is going to look like, or is the applicant going to tell us if it's a monument sign, or if it's a tall sign, or, you know, what's it going to look like? Can't we?
I think so. I think, I don't think we can ask about the design.
Well, I think there's some guidelines in the sign ordinance about, and that's what this is about, whether or not it can be an electronic messaging sign, whether or not it can be a monument sign, all of those things are covered in the sign ordinance. And so he's asking for a variance from the sign code.
That is correct. On the four aforementioned accounts, this lot could have a normal static sign, like it currently has, that could just be remade. So the variances being requested from the DRB were to allow an electronic message center.
And the electronic sign would be within that sign box, or is it going to be lower? Or what, what, what are you talking about?
I believe that is also a question that the applicant should answer.
I do think you bring up a good point, though, because I find the full LED signs that are like a movie going on all the time very, very distracting to driving. Whereas if it's just a message board that's just saying, you know, I have a special deal this week, it's, you know, not as distracting.
And it's a busy intersection with high school.
Yeah, I, I'd agree, there is a traffic problem with that, because being an electrical contractor, I've had to put in foundations and bring power out to signs, and we've had to move it a couple feet back, because after they put it in, after a while, they found out it was a traffic hazard. People are trying to read it, script isn't large enough, and it causes slowdowns or accidents. So we had to move it. And I agree with you two, that it's, they're obnoxious, and I don't really care for them, but that's just my personal, even though it was part of my business at one time. Any other questions? Okay, could, no audience questions? I guess we need to have the applicant. Yes, come up, sir.
Sir, could you, before you leave, just sign the board there, but if you could state your name?
Robert Lempa.
And, Mr. Lempa, basically, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Well, it, uh, these, our sign doesn't work good, no. I mean, it's shot, it's at the end of its life, and we do need to make a change. And we want to make, I want to put up a digital sign. I mean, it's, it's the way to go. I brought this to show you that, you know, with to change it, I've got to take this, dip it in a bucket of water, put, slap it on there, get it up there, try to get in the place, shake the old ones down, but you get the point. It's cumbersome, and the weather's bad. It's just, it's, this is the digital age. I want to do something digital. I've seen signs like this on Washington Street, as it was stated, high school has a digital sign. I'm not looking for something that's going to be, have a lot of flashes, or, you know, be distracting, or trying to call attention in an undue way. We think it's, it'll definitely be an improvement, and I think it could be something that it will help promote my business, you know, I want to have the name out there, and we want to be able to say, we have specials on, or, you know, we have this today, or special on this, something to get customers in, as any business wants to do. We're not looking for something loud and, again, and flashing, or garish, but we want something that we can use to attract customers and represent our business and tell people about it. The school, again, they have the sign, they talk about things going on, and, you know, I, being there for, I've been there 40 years now. I've seen a lot of changes to the area. The school sign, I'm not sure what I'm trying to say here, is just that it'll be an improvement. The school has one, a lot of them, there are other ones down in Washington that change, they have the type going, and, but again, I'm not looking for blaring lights, I'm not looking for, have it on all night, but something where we've got it out there, where we can advertise specials and change it without having to pull this out. And I think it's a reasonable request, and I ask you to support us, and, you know, we're willing to work with it, the city, and I don't know what else to say, but just, I think we, we, it's something we can use, it'll benefit us, we're not trying to impose on anybody. The residential area is only behind us, there is no other residential, you know, no houses on either side. Well, there is one, the house, it's, the building's for rent right now, but it's, you know, it's spaced away, and it's, it's empty right now. So it's not, it's not going to be something that's going to be going on all night, and, you know, flashing. So I think it's a reasonable request that I'm making. And I ask you to consider it seriously and give us a shot at this.
Commissioners?
Mr. Lempa, can I ask, I'm going to read you something here that's in the staff report. I don't know if you've seen this or not, but if you concur with this information that's in here, that you said you would, outside of normal operating hours, the EMC can be dimmed or completely shut off, which is required by the UDO, to reduce potential hazards to students, the message will be display, the message displayed will remain static during the school's normal drop-off and pickup times. Are you in concurrence with doing those steps for your sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Audience, any questions? Yes, sir. Would you like to come over here? After you sign in, could you basically state your name, and then raise, raise your right Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Could you state your name and your affiliation with the project, please?
Okay, my name is Donadole Trillo, and I own the company, I am his contractor for this project.
You own the company that would be making the sign? You own what company? The laundromat? Or the sign company?
No, my company is Italy Signs and Lighting, LLC.
Okay.
And just to answer some of your doubt before, the sign is 10 feet, the box, the bottom of the box is 10 feet, so for the safety, you know, most nationwide, and in Illinois, it cannot be lower of 10 feet. So the electronic sign will be the second part of the box. We already make some number with the planning and zoning, cannot be over, over 40 feet, so have to be 50% electronic on the bottom, and 50% the regular light box. The sign is very bad shape right now, and have to be rebuilt, just the box on the top. The foundation is enough, the sign is not heavy, our new signs, and the amperage of the power is enough to support the, the little signs, it will be three by six each side, both sides, and the light on the top are LED, so we are lower around the 16 amp, so 20 amp for power is more than enough. About dimming, yes, it can be dimmed with the program or with the sensor, but if you push more, that you are more restricted about this law, it can be done with the program, so it can be done with the program, with software, and can be shared off for all night if it's the problem about, about the sign, the distraction, the pollution, all this stuff, I completely respect the idea of all of you. But mostly of the city, they, sorry for my bad English, they pass these obstacles with a dimming, with a scrolling 10 seconds, you cannot be lower than that, because that is a problem. When the images start to scroll like that, can be distract the people, okay? That the city, the message there, almost, they are conform, yes or not, but 10 seconds is more than enough. The most, most of the city, they say between five and 10 seconds, so 10 seconds with the message, the special, and after 10, 10 seconds, there will be the next one, so will be not any match that scroll all the way, can be distract people. The young generation, they are already distracted for themselves, it's not something that I want to point my finger, but they do all around, all day, like that, say that, and mostly they can be distracted more for the, the sign from the city, from the school, that they have something that they have to read when they pass in front of there. So now, I don't want to start a fight between who did, who did not, but is the same thing like we are going right now with the electrical car, or with the regular, is the same problem. The technology are going more and more in this direction, so little bit of flexibility, please, if it's possible, because this gentleman, I know him for six years, he was asking me for this, this project, and I said, let's wait, because they will change, they will change, stay in contact also with the planning and zoning, little bit, little bit, so patiently he wait all this time. A difference of other people, they go in the night, they hang up the sign, and nobody can go there and turn it down, that, those signs, and you know very well about that. So if you have other question, technical question, other question, I, I can be, I can answer to you.
Is the logo portion of the sign going to be lit all the time, or will that go off at a prescribed area, whatever the, the code requires?
The logo will be the box on the top, identity figure of the box, that can be, I think, can be stay on, like all the regular light box during the night, with the sensor, dusk to dawn sensor, and the other one, if you want that to be off, can be off, because it's possible to do that with, with the software.
Have you, have, have you gone to the point of asking for a permit and having it reviewed yet, or is that still has to come?
There is no permit in the system yet. We are waiting to see the outcome of this hearing.
So that plan review will probably take care of any of the questions we have, yes?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioners?
I, if you look at the electronic image variance, the graph that are in charge of the data, so a minimum three required, and the variance amount is 145 feet, it's 58%. I, I mean, when I go through this chart, which is included in our materials, it's not close to what we would normally approve an electronic sign. And again, you know, I've asked this question before, why do we go to all the trouble of creating zoning maps and, and a Unified Development Ordinance if we keep not paying attention to all of the work that we put into doing this? And I understand why a new sign is needed, but I'm not sure I agree that it's an electronic sign. And, and so I look at what we, we stated this, and I, it's not even close. If it were closer, I think I would be more inclined to approve this, but it's not close. It's far off the mark.
Quick, quick follow-up on that, though. You're talking about that first line item that's on that chart?
I'm talking about looking at the variance amounts for electronic signs. There's a chart. It's attached to our.
Okay, I'll pull it back up. Thought you were referring to the item on the slide, Teddy.
And again, I'm not disagreeing with the need for a sign, and I understand that technology is changing.
So, can I say something? So will be always that some, some business, they can have the sign, and some mother never. So if you stay in that position, it will be always like that. Other cities, they do that proportional. If you have a big front facade, you can have a bigger sign. If I have a small facade, I can have a proportional, smaller sign. Otherwise, will be always, or white or black, somebody yes, somebody no, and always you will have this problem that signs, they are, this gentleman, as the corner of the, his business, there is a huge sign, with no permit, with nothing, and there are neon and everything in there, it's like, I don't know, Las Vegas. So also about the safety, if you go, you go downtown in Chicago, you will have an accident, because there are signs everywhere. It's not safe zone? I want to say something more. I'm doing the same thing in Lingolwood, for a guy that is asking for this permit for a little sign, little, small sign in the, in the, inside the store, Lingolwood say no. On the other side of the street is a skoki, the street is tooy, can somebody, your gentleman, explain to me, that, that street is safe, yes or not? Or when I drive there, I gotta drive looking only on right side, Lingolwood side? Question.
I have a question for staff, because I am not familiar with all the details of the UDO. Do we have, like this gentleman is talking about, a differentiation between the size of your lot and the size that your sign can be, or is there one flat requirement, which is listed here, and that doesn't matter how big your, you know, how big your lot is or not?
Yeah, the UDO doesn't specify whether you can have a bigger sign, it just specifies whether you can have the sign at all or not. So that are these requirements here. If he passes all of these, he would be allowed to have the electronic message sign, but since he doesn't meet these requirements, he had to go through the DRB, which denied the case. But, yeah, all signs are the same, no matter how big the lot is.
So Teddy, I understand your point, but it seems sort of one size fits all, doesn't really fit all, in terms of, I, you make a good point about why do we have a UDO if we keep offering variances, but I think that this is a good point that this gentleman makes about the fact that if you have a smaller, less ideal lot, that if you make your sign smaller and not as in-your-face.
Well, I'm also responding based on experience, having dealt with signage, is the Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street, and I think signage can either be attractive to a city or detractive. And there were reasons why limits were put on the electronic signs. And there's always going to be pushback, so I under, I under, you know, we have different opinions of what's beautiful, what's attractive, what's distracting, I'm sort of saying how I feel about it. And, you know, it's up to the, the total commission.
Staff, I would ask a question, too. It was brought up to the point that there's a neighboring business that has another sign.
It was brought up to the point that there's a neighboring business that has another sign, and it sounds like it was illegal and stuff like that. That's not for us to say, "Well, they did it, and then I could do it, too."
No, no.
Yeah, but, but we know that.
Not to compare, but I'm saying, that's what happened, when you say, "No, always no, no." It will be something that's.
I just don't want to muddy the situation, and we're not deciding that, or the merit of it. What we're looking at is somebody did something without a permit, and that's, that's code enforcement will have to take care of that.
I know, I know.
We're trying to do it legally.
The right way.
And we thank you for that.
For six years.
Any other questions?
Actually, I'm still interested in the clarification. Like I said, I think we're looking at the same thing about the, the property line. The, the one on the slide that you were looking at here.
Yeah.
Has the small number, the one on the slide that you showed us before, the four items seems to add in the other numbers, so what's the deal?
The presentation used the area of all three lots owned by the owner. This, what's on the screen before you now, is the measurements of the lot requesting the sign.
So is it legal to include all three lots? If that's the only sign?
Okay, so the, so the measurement in question really should be the.
Theoretically consolidate the three lots, but it'd still be under, and then he'd be an issue with, like, having the two businesses.
Compared to what Teddy is saying, it'd be much less under than what, you know, what you said, 59 percent. So, yeah, to me, to me, it's ultimately semantics, because do I know what the length of the lot is when I'm looking at a sign? I mean, come on, does anybody, really? You know, I guess my concern would be as if you had one every 20 feet along Washington, but that's certainly not the case at that location. And what you're saying, Teddy, you know, I think that's a reason of our board here, is every condition is different, and we should consider it based on the merits of what's there. And I'm looking at the sign, I'd rather have an electronic sign there than what's there now. It's ugly, you know? I'm sorry. And it would help the look of the building, frankly, so, you know, and, and if I drive by and I see that that's an electronic sign, I'm going, "Oh, my gosh," you know, "He's only got 100 feet of frontage, how the heck did he get away with that?" You know? Nobody's going to say that. So I guess I'm kind of leaning toward, "Why not?" I mean, it's going to help your business. I, I think you're right, I think it is the standard of signs today, so, you know, I don't know. I just think it's, it's appropriate.
And as far as the neighboring electronic sign, planning and zoning has been in contact with code compliance regarding that site.
Regarding that sign, are you, I mean, is one of the possible ramifications of that is that Waukegan would say, "Take it down"? Yes?
The possible ramifications of this ruling?
No, for the, the.
Of code compliance? Yes.
Nearby, that could be requested to be taken down.
It would, it could ultimately result in that, yes.
Any other questions? Anything from the audience? Do I have a motion?
I'll stick my neck out. I recommend overturning the decision of the Development Review Board and approve the sign variance in the zoning calendar 2788.
I'll second.
Who seconded that?
Ewing.
Okay. So Commissioner Hague and Commissioner Ewing seconded. Any discussion?
Just to say, I'm sorry, that Commissioner Anderson's points are valid, well, you do a lot of work in order to do these things, but I also agree with, I believe Commissioner Hague, who talked about it, you kind of look at them on a case-by-case basis as well.
Roll call vote, please.
Anderson?
No.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Carlos?
No.
Ewing?
Yes.
Shepherd?
No.
Bill?
Yes. So what we've done is basically made a motion to rescind the previous, yeah. So you need to submit some permits, get that going.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do have some additional business before we close. The city has something with the UDO.
Just before we adjourn, next month, we're bringing forward the UDO amendments, so I'm just going to give you the draft amendments now, so you have plenty of time to go over them. If you have questions, feel free to reach out. They're still pending legal review, so things could change. I'll give you the full rundown of the presentation of what they all mean and why we're doing them next month, but want to give you the time ahead of time, so make, you know, feel free to make your motion adjourn, I'll pass these out.
Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 8:55, we concluded this meeting.